So our first talk this afternoon is by Natasha Dering, applications of high-dimensional Ellenke spaces.
Alright, so thank you for organizing this invitation. It's nice to be here. This is my title page, so this is what I'm talking about. Applications of some high-dimensional and infinite-dimensional Ellenke spaces. And I'd like to take this moment to advertise Blast conference, which is a conference I started with my colleague Nick Galatos 10 years ago. And it will return to the University of Denver this summer. We have NSF funding and medium amounts of money for young-ish people. Graduate students, post-docs, tenure tracks. So please come. It's going to be a very good program, a very diverse program of subjects. And we hope you'll contribute. So the Ellenke space is... Could I give a show of hands of who's heard of the Ellenke space? Possible. Okay, so for those of you who haven't heard of it, it's basically the bare space with a much-refined topology. So we start with your collection of infinite subsets of Omega as members of the space. And then you define this refined topology where the basic open sets are of this form S A, which means that you take all of the infinite subsets of Omega, which are N extending S, and are contained in A. So this is a refinement of the normal open topology on the bare space. And so this was defined by Ellenke in order to get a topological handle on which subsets of the infinite subsets of Omega would constitute making a Ramsey space, meaning that they would have this Ramsey property. So what this did, this was the end of a long line of work of people like Galpin and Galvin Perdery and Ash Williams to get the most optimal topological characterization of Ramsey-ness. So what it says is that this space with this refined Ellenke topology satisfies that any subset of Omega to the Omega, which satisfies the property there in this refined topology, will have this property that for any basic open set, you can find a member in that set, so it's extending S again, contained in A, so that either this basic open set is contained in X or is intersection of S, X is empty, right? So you've got either color 1 or color 0. And forcing with numbers of the Ellenke space, where you're ignoring finite heads, is exactly the forcing that's going to give you a Ramsey ultrafilter. So that's an ultrafilter that has witnesses of Ramsey's theorem. And this partial ordering of infinite sets, partially ordered by almost inclusion, is forcing equivalent to this Boolean algebra R sub Omega mod the finite subsets, right? And one can naturally generalize this Boolean algebra by upping the complexity of its definition. So the first simplest way of upping its complexity is to work on Omega cross Omega, this with Omega. And then laud by a souped-up ideal called Fin cross Fin. So Fin cross Fin is these subsets X, set of Omega cross Omega subset for all but finitely many n, its nth fiber is finite. So in terms, I'll use a very little bit of words today. See, here, if you've got Omega cross Omega, right? These Fin cross Fin numbers look like, well, you went somewhere, you could have had some infinite sets here, but after some point you are bounded below some function. So these are Fin cross Fin types of sets. And forcing with P Omega squared mod Fin cross Fin adds an ultrafilter called U sub 2, which is in Blast's terminology, the next best thing to a P-point, if you've seen that paper of ours. And it satisfies the... Why he uses this terminology is because it satisfies the best Ramsey property that a non-P-point can satisfy. So for any coloring of pairs of Omega, you can find a member in this ultrafilter, into R colors, you can find a member of the ultrafilter which takes no more than 4 of those original colors on some number of U's 2. And what's interesting about this is that, as you might intuit, if you project down to the first coordinates of this ultrafilter, what you're going to get is something isomorphic to the ultrafilter you would have gotten by forcing with Omega mod Fin. So projecting down the first coordinate, getting rid of that second coordinate, will give you a Boolean algebra isomorphic to the base of P Omega mod finite. If you project to the second coordinate, you don't get the ultrafilter at all. So it's very much not a Fefferman product of P-points. And you can continue this construction of Fin cross Fin ideals of your different products of Omega. So Fin to the k plus 1 is Fin cross Fin to the k plus 1, uh, to the k. So that means you're in Fin k plus 1, if only for all but finitely many members of Omega, your fiber and fiber is in Fin to the k. And each of these Boolean algebras forces an ultrafilter, which is again non-P-point. With the nice property that when you project down to the first j coordinates, you end up with something isomorphic to if you add just force with P Omega to the j mod Fin to the j. Now, I'd like to replace Omega to the k by the sets, subsets of Omega of size k. So this amounts to just chopping off the lower diagonal of Omega to the k, so you're not getting anything from the ultrafilter. And I'm going to let this I sub k be the ideal on these k-sized subsets of Omega obtained by projecting, basically. Basically the same construction, but when you do this, a nice thing will emerge. So first of all, this is the same as the other Boolean algebras I'm interested in. But secondly, one can recognize this as a uniform barrier of rank k. And once you do that, you can realize this recursive construction can go up all of the uniform barriers of rank, countable or else, right? So that's what I did. And for one example of the infinite rank uniform barrier, you have the Schrader barrier, where it consists of all finite subsets of Omega, so that the size of S equals the minimum number of S plus 1. So you have the set 0, and then you have the set 1, 2, 1, 3, 1, 4, et cetera, set 2, 3, 4, and upwards, right? So they're sort of, they're growing in these cones. And this is how you make new barriers from old ones, you string them together. So you have the smaller rank going to rank larger, and you can continue any recursive construction of these uniform barriers. So for S, a subset of, X subset of S, I'm going to define X of N to be a member of X whose minimum member is N, just as a notation. And then I sub S, that ideal of Fin, Fin to the cross Schrader barrier, is defined to be the members which are subsets of S, so that for all but finitely many n, this nth fiber is in I sub N, S for that. And then for any uniform barrier B, you can make this Boolean algebra. It's going to force an ultrafilter to be on a countable base B, that barrier. And it's not hard to deduce that if you have two uniform barriers and you project down to C, then this Boolean algebra is going to embed as a piece of algebra for this one, and this ultrafilter is isomorphic to the correct projection of this one. So you get, the point is that you get this whole hierarchy of these non-P-points that satisfy weaker and weaker, bigger partition properties. And you can recover all the old ones from the new ones. So you've got this nice Omega 1, well, actually Omega to be Omega, because there's lots of barriers of these types of ultrafilters. So what was my initial motivation for this study? It was looking at cofinal types of ultrafilters. And small, short refresher course, a function f is called cofinal if it maps every filter base from one ultrafilter to a filter base for another one. And we call this 2P reducibility. And 2P reducibility defines an equivalence relation if you can reduce both ways. And this equivalence relation is, of course, an abelian-Keisler relation. And Reeb and Keisler equivalence is exactly the same thing as isomorphisms of ultrafilters in their subpermutation of natural numbers which turns one to the other. And the ultrafilter forced by P Omega squared mod Fin to the 2 is Reeb and Keisler minimal above this Ramsey ultrafilter. That was known, you can deduce that knowing, you know, you just work with the rest of it. And then, in this paper with Emre Sönmez Dillip, one study, other studies, there's a lot in that paper, we showed that this U 2 is 2P above its projection and is also non-2P maximal. And the interest in that was that we were looking for these basically generated ultrafilters, or ultrafilter-like things, basically generated sort of like things, which are, as far as we know, only obtainable by going through iterative 2P points. So this was something that was not a Fefferman iterative point, sort of used like a... And actually, in this paper, Emre's shows that if you do another forcing, you recover this as a Fefferman iterative 2P point, so it's close, but not exactly one. But this left open what was the exact 2P structure below this U 2. We know it's not minimal, we know it's not maximal, we know it's above something else, it's Ramsey. But what really is there? And so I showed that it's actually 2P minimal above its projection to or with the ultrafilter. And furthermore, once I did that, why stop at 2? There's so many more numbers in the world. So by similar methods, but it takes some more work, I showed that this ultrafilter U k forced by P Omega k mod Fin k has initial 2P structure, which is exactly a sequence of length k with nothing else in between. And it is exactly these projections of these ultrafilters to the ones that fit inside. So there's nothing off to the side. Like, you take everything that's 2P below U k. This is all you get in U j, although you don't get anything else. And some further work, so I've written up, I mean, this is published for doing the Ramsey theory of these spaces. The 2P part I've not published yet. So you can extend number 2 to all infinite rank barriers. But the 2P structure gets more interesting because you get chains of length 2P Omega, and they're sort of acting like ultra filters of the natural numbers. So these results relied extremely strongly on the fact that I could pull out topological Ramsey spaces from these Boolean algebras. And then prove some canonization theorems for equivalence relations on the front. So the two-dimensional Ellenke space, the goal there was to construct a topological Ramsey space, which is dense inside of Fin cross Fin plus, right? It's Fin cross Fin plus with the partial ordering of U to the Fin cross Fin, does the analog of Omega to the Omega by almost inclusion. So these are the numbers that we're looking at. And then the question is, which members of this should we allow that we want to get Ramsey theory? Because if you allow everything, you're just not going to get Ramsey theory. It's too wild. It's not an infrastructure. So the answer was that it picked out certain subsets of the Fin cross Fin plus. You have to order them in a way that gets you order type Omega, so that you have this Ramsey space construction of finite initial segments to members of the space in a finite many steps. You don't want to do Omega too many steps. I mean, Omega to the 2, it's just too long for this studying. So I came up with an ordering of the members of the space, and I've given this in previous talks, so I didn't want to go through it too much. But the point I want to make here is that you have to fix a particular ordering, which I'm calling this Curly-Lussman. And it's not random, right? It actually has to do with some things. And I'm putting it on the members which are non-decreasing sequences of natural numbers of the 2. And the members of this space E 2 are going to consist of all subsets of this maximal number. This is like standing in for Omega cross Omega, which are, for which this order preserving bijection is also going to be attributed by a 2P. So I'll give a couple of examples. This is a member of this two-dimensional Ellenke space. So the red lines are going, okay, that's the first number, if you're looking at how these are ordered. That's the first number, that's the second number. There's a 2 there, which means that the next one is going to have to come from some sub-tree which starts with a 2 or above. So I'm putting it, picking that one there. And that 2, 2, the top 2, says the next one back here has to start above 2, so I'm going to leave it 5. And then the 5 says this next one had to be 5 or above, so we've got 2, 5. And this next one had to be a 5 or above, that's minimal 1 I could have picked, okay? And it's another example, so it's starting with 1, 1, 2 is my minimal. Then I chose the minimal 1 above that. That's going to push me up to one of these sub-trees of 3 or above from the third. So I took the smallest 1, 3, 3, go back to this one, I took 5, 5. I've got to go above 5 here, 5 or above, I took 6. And I've got to go either to 6 or above here. And then you keep on sort of leading your way through. But there's, in the paper, there's a very well-defined total ordering, an order type Omega that you follow that does this. Okay, so the point is, you can't just take whatever you want, right? You have to follow some ordering. It has to be strict enough that is going to allow you to prove a pigeonhole property for one extension of some finite piece into here while preserving the structure. So the collection of these subsets which preserve this ordering and biject... Okay, these induce the finite approximations, which gives you what are the basic open sets in this now two-dimensional Ellenke topology, right? So notationally, the only difference between this and the one for the Ellenke space is that I'm requiring these things to be this. And I made this a very strict subset. Okay, so this E 2 space, so this space, these were axioms of Todorjovic, and hence it's a topological Ramsey space. And the fact that it's a topological Ramsey space was very important for these 2P results. You can't go and get it any other way. Okay, three-dimensional Ellenke space. So we're going up barriers. And so I'm taking non-decreasing sequences of length 3. And this is a member of the space, I'm just pointing out. So this is 0, 0, 0. This is 0, 0, 1. And then from there, so it's like on this little tree, you're doing what I just did in the last example. So you're going to go here, here, and then to 0, 1, 1. And I'm going to skip up to the next tree, fill that in, and then repeat, fill in as if you were in E 2, fill in as if you were in E 2, and you keep going. So it's very recursive construction of the ordering on these things. And then here's the Schrader barrier, that can be the material for this exhibit, but it's similar. You go using what you've constructed already for lower ranks. And that's a good definition, and then if you can see how this works, then you can figure out how it's going to go up for all the countable rank barriers. So these are the high and infinite-dimensional Ellenke spaces. And the key is that these four formed dense subsets of these Fin plus, you know, the duals of these ideals. And that means that they're going to be forcibly equivalent to these Boolean, this hierarchy of Boolean algebras. Get your ultrafilters associated with these Ramsey spaces. Okay, so that's basically what I just said there. And these steps were necessarily not sufficient for achieving these 2P types. So now that we have these spaces, you can do pretty much anything you can do with the Ellenke space in this hierarchy. So you go back and you look at, okay, what are some problems people have solved using the Ellenke space? Could we bump them up to these higher-dimensional Ellenke spaces? Well, yes, otherwise we wouldn't be getting this talk. So I mentioned these things last year, I'm just going to put one slide on here. And with some other people in Denver, we constructed the Hugonik spaces using Thierlitz-type Moore constructions over fronts of finite rank on these E k spaces. This is just the very, 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 very beginning of what could be done in this line. Ideally, you could take any topological Ramsey space, do this Thierlitz-type construction, and generates a few types of Hugonik spaces. What the ones we did form a hierarchy of spaces over the LP. So they all embed LP space, but then they get more complex as you go up the rank of the E k. And also, they project to each other in more than one way, lots of different ways. And my motivation for this project was a tight dream that hopefully, with the use of infinite-dimensional barriers, infinite rank barriers and/or infinite-dimensional Ellenke spaces, we might be able to get some new Shredert types of spaces and check some light on distribution problems from the paper. Okay, second one. Current, recent student of Stapan Todorjovic, she's graduating this year. Jang proved that these ultrafilters forced by P to the Omega k mod Fin k are preserved under products of Sacks forcings. She's done other work similarly to this for the Melikan, the ultimate filter, Heimann ultrafilters, and associated with these infinite block sequences, the Melikan space and the Fin k's also, and also some other ones. But, so in this paper, she proves a moderately abstract, I don't think it's moderate, I think it's pretty strong. But she calls it this moderately abstract for her Elentek theorem. So basically, you're taking any topological Ramsey space satisfying some extra axiom that she makes clear with many, many copies of the wheels, and make this parameterized Ellenke theorem for them. And then as applications of that theorem, she shows that, well, all of these E k spaces satisfy her premises, and then she applies it to deduce this theorem about preservation of the Sacks forcings. And more recently, so with a postdoc, Dan Hathaway, oh, next slide. We've been working on some stuff related to this theorem of Heimann by Isomodin. So this is in her paper called a barren extension. And the extension is barren because they have the same size of ordinals. And moreover, every sequence of numbers of the smaller model inside the larger model is contained inside this model. Right? So as long as you have M many transitive models CF, plus this infinitary partition relation, which of course cannot hold if you have the axiom of choice, then you can deduce the rest. And in particular, this theorem holds when M is the solid model, L bar. So what we did with Dan was extend these up, these high-dimensional Ellenke spaces. So if you fix a uniform barrier B, and you let them be a transitive model of CF plus the correct extension of that infinitary partition relation for Omega, namely that E d is, every subset of E d is ring, et cetera, then you get exactly the same, the same consequence. And what interested me in this project was that you're getting a hierarchy of models without choice, without choice, but with stronger and stronger fragments of choice, which are embodied in these ultra-filters. So U B contains every ultra-filter that it can project to, U K is the wise, right? So you have the Ramsey one, but then you have the next one's [inaudible]. And then you have up and up and up through the hierarchy. And each of these ones still does an adding of new sets of ordinals, even though you're getting more and more ultra-filters at your disposal in these models. So these are the references, and they'll be on the slides on the webpage. And then I want to end with another advertisement for the last. So it's a good conference, it's very interdisciplinary, and we started it 10 years ago, and now the 10-year anniversary in Denver this year. And so come have a blast.
See, are there any questions?
In higher-dimensional product space, the first one that you get is the old [inaudible] and then?
Well, it should be, so I haven't done, we haven't done the [inaudible]. Yeah, we did the ones that are LPs.
Not, not [inaudible].
No, I think that we could get it, but what I'm saying is, so these, these were his methods, he invented this method, but using his method, if you restrict to a barrier of rank K, you get an LP space for the relevant P. So to do what he did, we have to look at barriers of infinite rank.
So there's some [inaudible]. Okay, so the next talk will be in about two minutes.
So my point is that for any such theorem, if you really want to use the closure method, you need a companion theorem like this. That is here of the closure. So there are a lot of generalizations of Riemann's theorem, Chebyshevsky's theorem. One of them is Willard's des，则made in 1984. They introduced this almost integral degree. So for those who don't remember or don't know this definition, the almost integral degree with respect to closed sets, they don't think this way, is the supremal limit of such a LFX, where this LFX is the minimum cardinal number of kappa, such that for every open in X cover U of F, you can find a subfamily of that cover, such that that subfamily has been there for all the kappa and the union of the closures of the elements of this family covers the same. So once we have this concept of almost integral degree with respect to closed sets and having in mind that it's always less than or equal to the integral number, they proved in their paper from 1984 that the granitary theorem of space X is less than or equal to the character size of almost integral degree with respect to closed sets. And as I said before, in order to prove any theorem like this, you need a companion theorem. And because they used the closure method, their companion theorem was Pospich's theorem that the closure of every set is less than or equal to A to the k-th space. So in the same paper, they actually said that using the same proof of their theorem, if you notice I denoted this Willard's des，则made base theorem. This stands for base theorem because that's their fundamental theorem. And then they said, oh, in the same way, we can prove a different theorem. All that we have to do is replace Pospich's theorem with this companion theorem. This is the companion theorem. So if you have this theorem, and that's what they say in their paper, and using the closure method in the same way, so you can prove this theorem that the LFX is less than or equal to two to the tightness times the pi-character or two-character and the almost integral degree with respect to closed set. So I'm here trying to stress on the fact that they didn't prove this. Any of this, they didn't prove this theorem. I mean, there was no proof of this theorem. There was no proof of this theorem. We have ability to say similarly have proof of theorem one or two. And I'll come back later to this. So of course, this theorem is obviously true because zero years later, Bell and Kevorov, you know, this pi-character is absolutely not a set in that theorem. And they proved that the granitary is always less than or equal to two to the tightness times the four-two factor and the almost integral degree with respect to closed set. They again used the closure method, but as a companion theorem, they used this inequality, which is different from the inequality that Willard's des，则made used. So later, Kevorov noticed that for Rudisson spaces, the pi-character is less than or equal to. So he actually replaced for Rudisson spaces the pi-character with the most reduced character. But this is just for your information. I'm not going to use the whole theorem. But the point here is that once you have, once you have the Willard's theorem, Willard's des，则made theorem falls trivially because you cannot hear any closure that you want. At long distance, it's not zero. And you get another theorem. So in our paper with Gjengel and Jukian in 2016, we are able to generalize Willard's des，则made theorem by moving the pi-character from the exponent down in the base and replacing the tightness with the absolute open tightness. Open tightness was introduced by Gjengel in 1983. The open tightness, or shortened all tightness of a space X is less than or equal to tau if for every family you have open subset of X. And for each point x which belongs to the closure of the union of this family, you can find a subfamily V with the granitary element tau, such that x is still in the closure of the union of this set. So the all tightness is always, there's a tightness and the all tightness is always a similar number for every space X. And in our paper, we show that Bell and Kevorov equality and this inequality are kind of independent. No one of them follows from the other. So in that paper, and that was actually the reason I brought today, we asked this question. Can we replace the almost integral degree with respect to closed set with the weak integral degree with respect to closed set in our inequality? And we asked this question for regular spaces only for a reason. The first thing is remind you the definition of weak integral degree with respect to closed set. This is the smallest case with the number kappa, such that for every closed subset of X, and there we have open in X cover U of F. You can find subfamily of you, such that the granitary does have a subfamily there for all the kappa and F is contained in the closure of the union of this family. So the difference between weak integral and almost integral degree with respect to closed set will be proofed. So the weak integral degree with the closed set is always less than or equal to the almost integral degree. And it was all before always there are the same similar number. And now, because of these inequalities, if one proves this part, then this will be a subtle generalization of Arnold-Ucus' inequality and Riemann's exists for regular spaces. So, but let me recall you that for Rudisson, actually, Riemann's proved this inequality for regular spaces. And Alice in 1993, she already proved the same inequality for Rudisson spaces. But in 1979, when Riemann's proved this inequality, he actually asked this question. Is that inequality true for Hausdorff spaces? And this question is still open. And that is the reason why we didn't ask the previous question for Hausdorff spaces because even for regular spaces it's difficult. So if this is true, having in mind this problem, maybe if one can prove this theorem or better for Rudisson spaces, maybe that's helpful. And I was trying to answer our own question. And one way to try to answer this question is to ask if our theorem, as I mentioned, for the generalization of Willard's des，则made equality, can't be proved by the closure method. Because we use in our proof recursion, but it was not by the closure method. At every step, we didn't think that closure is a set. We said, we just add a certain point, then we add more points and more points and more point. So it was slightly different method. And that's why I asked myself this question. Is there a proof by closure method? And the answer is yes. If you use the following companion theorem, which happened to be in our paper also. I didn't make that connection when we put this paper, that once you have this theorem, which is to correct Hausdorff space, you can actually use a simple corollary of it. If the granitary is A, is small, then the granitary of the closure is also small. So using this as a companion theorem, one can prove our theorem using the closure method. And then you can see another corollary of this theorem. Just release this right hand side to the pi-character. Then the pi-character will disappear with it and you'll get this inequality, which is also in our paper. But then, then you can compare this inequality with Willard's des，则made inequality. And you can say, okay, but it's not all tightness is given necessarily here. Because remember, the companion theorem, Willard's des，则made was this one. There is no all tightness. They claim that they were able to prove their theorem using just this inequality. Well, but having in mind that the pi-character is not monotonic. So this is their theorem that they came up with. But if you really follow what they suggested, follow their basic theorem, their theorem that they really proved in the paper. And if you follow their theorem, you actually at any step, you need this, instead of, you need actually this inequality at any single step of the recursion. But what they have is this inequality. And they didn't prove it, but they suggested how one can prove it. And I followed their suggestion. Yes, one can prove this very easy following one of the things in Ucus' paper. But to prove this, you have to use the fact that this set is dense in that set. Therefore, it will closely, this theorem actually, the way how you prove it is equivalent to this inequality. Here, you should have A, but not S. That's what I'll from the proof. And because the pi-character is not monoton, one could ask, is it true that these two inequalities are the same? If they are the same, then the proof of Willard's des，则made theorem would be fine. So one thing, one should answer, ask is, is it true that every set to this power is equal to the granitary of the same set of this power? Is it possible this to be strong inequality? And I asked this question several days ago, Vladimir. And he constricted such example pretty much immediately. And even more, the space he constricted is completely regular, not just Hausdorff. Therefore, having in mind that this should, could be much less than this shows that problem we cannot prove Willard's des，则made theorem using what they suggested. Of course, we need a counter example, for example, of a space which is like this, the closure of this set is greater than that. And then we can say, so sure that they, we cannot prove their theorem how they suggested. Well, if you prove that this is always less than or equal, this would be a very nice theorem. I'm sure that if one can prove this, it will really not in the way how they suggested in their paper. So this question, obviously, is if you want my previous question, whether the all tightness there is really the same. And actually, if one can prove that this is always less than or equal, then we can improve our theorem and remove the all tightness from the inequality. So what you can actually prove is using their inequality. Then automatically you have this inequality. And then using this as a companion theorem, instead of what they said in their paper that they could prove, you can prove this. So instead of so, you should have proved the best. Another thing that you can prove also directly is from this inequality that, which is obviously true, you can use this theorem as a companion theorem, where this is the keridetary pi-character. And then using this as a companion theorem, having in mind that the tightness is less than the keridetary pi-character, instead of the inequality that they suggested, you can prove this inequality. But, but these two new theorems are not, do not give us new information, actually, because of the Bell-Kevorov's theorem, because Bell-Kevorov's inequality is much bigger than the whole. So another corollary that follows from our companion theorem is this, where you write that inequality for the entire space, you get this inequality. And you see here the all tightness. And for a long time, I have been thinking how to improve Arnold-Ucus' theorem by replacing the similarity with the all tightness. But if you do that, that's simply possible because even more if you want to improve Sun's inequality, he has there the pi-character. If you replace the similarity with the all tightness and you have the all super-character, all these three functions are local. You cannot expect to find a upper bound of the granitary of all space using non-local functions. So one of them must be local. And I have been wondering what should be this extra, extra function, global function that will be fit nicely, that will fit nicely there. And then I saw this theorem in our paper. We didn't say much about it. We just said that, because this time this is always, we put the pi-way, we just wrote this theorem without any comment. But, but the truth is, and that's what I noticed very simply, that actually this theorem is exactly what I was looking for. That is a theorem that actually generalized Sun's theorem and therefore Arnold-Ucus' theorem. And here is why. It is because of this fact that this granitary is always less than or equal to this granitary, which is upper bound in Sun's inequality. And because I know every, every top must have one proof. Here is the proof of this theorem, which is pretty much trivial. You start with this left hand side. You replace this with this product. Then, then you replace the test thing with the whole space and you replace the all tightness with the similarity. And then using Sun's theorem, this is less than this cardinal number. And that's how you show that our inequality is better than Sun's inequality. And therefore, this is a generalization of Sun's usual house inequality, which means also a generalization of Chebyshevsky and Arnold-Ucus' inequality.
Okay, we have finally one quick question. Anyone have one?
Could you remind us what size of C of that?
It is to the character with respect to closed set. So you want not the open sets, the intersection to be your point, but the closures of the open sets to be the intersection of the, of that.
On go spaces with a modern monotone closure preserving operator.
Thanks very much. I'm happy to be here. Get to see two of Edison at all. And then us, two students of Gary at all. So thanks to organizers. Now, Sean Porter, please, just talking after me. So I, basically, what we do is extend certain theorems that work for monotonically metacompact spaces, extending for something, spaces that we say they possess monotone closure preserving operator. And I don't get to that part. But first, I want to talk about similar theorems that come like years ago. And one of the first difference in theorems monotonicly compact, lots of, in this theorem, the order of the closure to space is a metrizable, a result of Gary-Greiffing. And then later improved to taking monotonicly compact Hausdorff space, so it doesn't have to be a lot, it's metrizable. These results may answer the question of Matt V. And this is one of the papers that has Matt V. This is one of the quarters. And in this paper, they study the monotonicity law property and any separable geospaces theoretically monotonically limited off. And I didn't give the definition, but here are the definitions. Spaces monotonic, so you take any covering property like compact or a limited off or metacompact and making monotone and the way to make monotones is any monotonically whatever. If there is an operator R from open covers to attend a certain property like for compact, you have finite or limited off, you have countable, etc., open refinement, that covers your space. And this operator R should be monotone. So what exactly is the meaning of that? Now, the first part is just what I said. If you use any open cover, then R is a refinement. Open refinement that covers your space, which is have required property finite, countable, point finite. And then if you have two open covers and U of Y is of B, then R of U is say finite or countable, etc., defines R. So R of U defines R of B or or in symbol. See, U of Y is B, then R of U of B defines R of B. That's the monotone part. And now for the par compact spaces, like you're going to say, what was monotonicly par compact? In fact, you know, for par compact spaces, there are many characterizations. Like the usual definition is in terms of locally finite open covers, but you also have a equivalent characterization in terms of open star refinements or closure preserving refinements, whether they're open or not. So you could try to make a monotone version for each of these properties. And it turns out, when you look at the monotone versions, they are not equivalent. For some of them, it wasn't known for a while. And actually, not many of them are considered yet. So one of the first to be considered, Garrett, Sidon, Moody. In 1993, they studied what they call monotonicly par compact. Their definition of monotonicly par compact is you require the refinements to be star refinements, open star refinements, instead of open or be finite refinements. So if you have this version of monotone par compact, this actually turns to be equivalent to a space being proto-metrizable, which means if it's par compact space with an auto-base, and it's a generalization of metrizable spaces. Then, so they were making interest in this version where you look at star refinements and look at the monotone version. But they also both brought to characterize spaces that are obtained when we start with the usual definition in terms of locally finite refinements and look at the class of spaces that satisfy the monotone version of this definition. So, which means this term monotonic par compact may be ambiguous depending on what property exactly you start with, whether star refinements or locally finite refinements or something else. So we, Ted and I, use an alternative terminology. And we say, instead of saying space is monotonicly par compact, we say that it has a monotone open star refinement or whatever other refinement. Instead of star refinement, you could put locally finite or a closure preserving. So have an operator R, such that if R open cover U, R of U, this is an open star refinement, and then have monotonicity. Or you could say the space has a monotone locally finite operator. This time you require that R of U is open locally finite instead of star finite. And Ted and I have a paper in which we, one thing we did, we proved that every space with a monotone open star refinement operator also has a monotone locally finite operator, which means some problem metrizable spaces do have a monotone locally finite operator. And then, whether the converse, there is an example, Timothy Chase,
Which is not monotonically metacompact, and it has a monotone locally finite operator. And this of course provides these properties. And then we finish to modify the proof of one of the lemmas in Peng and Lee's paper. To get that if it has, if the space has a monotone order preserving operator, then something happens, so we get this condition C and D about arguing that being closed discrete, and then we could use the theorem by Bennett, Hart and Lutz. And so was that model. Now, this is one of the results that metacompact twice compact, but for geospaces, the monotone version turns out to be true for geospaces also. That's one of our results with this. And then, this is actually a proof, I don't know if I wanted to look into the details. Basically, the idea is if you have any open cover, and look at one open set first, you could partition this open set into its components, each component for the open, I mean component connected with respect to the order. Or I should say convex components, with so even partition every open set in its convex component, so you get another cover now consisting of convex sets. You apply your monotone closure preserving operator. So if in each of, well maybe not in each, but whatever you get, each of these elements of the closure preserving cover is contained in one of these. So they need to take a convex half, and you would still have a refinement, because these are convex. And when you do that, you get a big D that is open, maybe it is not open at endpoints. And basically, that's the main idea, then you have to work with the details and see what to do at the endpoints. But... The monotone metacompact operator, which it assumes that you want to be top on covers actually. So that what I will say here about the endpoints does not apply exactly this way, which I'll say a little bit later. Oh, let me skip this proof. So this is one of the lemmas of this theorem. It says if you have a space, geospaces with monotone closure preserving operator, Peng has another operator that's also monotone closure preserving, but it has some additional properties, basically it has pieces in it that look open. So this is an open, maybe it is not open at this point. If X happens to be a point that has two-sided neighborhood. But apart from that, you get a lot of sets that are almost open, at least open at most points. So that's kind of the main idea, why you could transfer results about monotonically metacompact spaces to spaces, geospaces with a monotone closure preserving operator. And let's see, so what else? This line I wrote, if you look carefully, but it says if you have something that's closure preserving, if you get assumptions, then you get something that's point finite in the conclusion. And there would result, you could use results from Peng and Lee's paper and Ben and Lutz's paper. And that's actually the whole proof of the theorem. It's not very long, I wouldn't look at this, but you could see it's kind of short. Well, assuming, assuming you rely on another level that had been proved before that. And that's one of the propositions, that if you get the assumptions, you get if you assumption you have closure preserving operator, then in the conclusion you get that this is sigma closed discrete, and then you're back to the results of Bennett, Hart and Lutz. We could apply those. So this is the theorem again, what Bennett, Hart and Lutz proved, and the extensions that we added. So all these equivalences. One thing that we don't know, this question I agree, we show that for geospaces, if you have that the underlying blocks have that sigma closed discrete dense subset, then we could prove certain results. And then, we don't know if that is really necessary, that the underlying blocks does have a sigma closed discrete dense subset. So this is one of the questions, is the geospace has a monotone open or otherwise closure preserving operator, must it have the monotonic metacompact? If that happens, then most of our results would be like, oh, that's too easy, because it follows from the other paper of Bennett, Hart and Lutz. So we also have some versions when the... All right, this is the version, where you don't talk about the underlying blocks, if the space itself has a sigma closed discrete dense subset, and has a monotone closure preserving operator, then it is a metrizable space. So the Zorni Frey line does not have a monotone closure preserving operator, whether you say open or not. The compact nodes with the monotone closure preserving operator must be first countable. We don't know if you could say here metrizable. We know you could say metrizable in the conclusion if you assume the closure preserving operator is open. Not in general, so the question must actually be metratable. We know, yes, if the operator is open. And the ideal proof, I think it was one of the previous lemmas, when you start with arbitrary monotone closure preserving operator, and make it to be... Or if you start with a closure preserving operator, as long as you modify it a bit, you can get point finite one, and then apply some non-theorems. And in one special case, we don't have to say the monotone closure preserving operator is open. This special case is when this set of points that don't have a left looking or right looking neighborhood. If that set is empty, then of course, then it turns out that the level that we have heard here, that arbitrary closure preserving refinement, we get one that has a set that we have big interior except at some endpoints. Well, if this set is empty, then what we get from with that operation is actually open at every point. So then we don't have to assume that the operator is open, we could get one that is open. So let's see, I need to do this. So the paper, all right, I guess that's the last slide, what does it say? Just the last result, the axioms of the double arrow, because in that case, the set of points that don't have left looking or right looking neighborhood is empty. In that case, we get that the double arrow does not have a monotone closure preserving operator, open or not. And what is already? These are the results that I presented. Thank you. Okay, any questions? Well, thank you. If you're watching on YouTube, thank you.
I call this pair base the Therian Sub-Orbital Rank or NSR Pair Base. And throw out the points. So, so basically what it is, is you have this pair base, you have these two pairs. And so, if the first coordinates are not empty, okay? Then what I can go through is, is if the first coordinates are not empty, then I can find a finite subset of that sub-collection there, such that the second coordinate will contain all the first coordinates, okay? And this is actually equivalent to property A. And I didn't just go through the general, or the history of general topology and pick out random names for this. If you get rid of these components here, and just, if these two things were equal, then this is something called a basis of, a Therian basis of sub-orbital rank, introduced by Peter Nikosch and Lindgren, and studied by Peter. Had quite a few papers on these, back in the seventies, alright? So, it is true, these are equivalent properties here. But I found that the NSR pair base was a little bit easier to work with, okay? And what happens is, is when you start thinking about this in Therian's property instead of the points, you can think, you can look at countable collections of these things, alright? So you can go a little bit beyond what Tim and Gary proved, that if you have a compact space, a setable space, or a G O space with a sigma closed discrete subset, then X is metrizable differently if it has a countable collection of these things, like this. So, I had some of these results last year at the Spring Topology Conference, okay? So, that's where we are at this moment here. So the next thing I want to talk about, another property that they considered, alright? In their paper, Tim and Gary's paper is this property B. So, and so this one here, same sort of thing that's happening here, but it's, it's a little harder to determine that this is really a pair base problem. Because, alright, same thing here. The neighborhood that you can find in between the point and the neighborhood, if it's, if it's not empty, then what you can do is, is you can find out a sub-collection of the second pairs, or the U's here, that just cover the points. And not saying anything about the neighborhoods that you stick in between, you just cover the points there, right? So, this is actually very similar to another property that Peter Nikosch introduced, called his sheltering, okay? So in a way, you can think of that U's are sheltering the points, because they cover the points there. And Peter informs me that he has results on these shelters that he never published, which maybe he will now. So I can see what he's done, alright? Okay, so, alright. This is a much weaker property. So any space with exactly one non-isolated point has property B, alright? So when you go through that, the one-point compactification of a countable discrete set has property B, but won't have property A because it's not metrizable. Or even the sequential fan would be another such example there. So, what I have not said anything about was in G O spaces. So I had assumed that there's got to be some counterexample out there in G O spaces that's going to work. It's going to be a counterexample. But it turns out, it's not. And the reason why it's not is, is Mirko alluded to this earlier. And what I did was, is I went through Bennett, Hart, and Lutz's papers, and Ping, Lee's papers, and distilled exactly what is the least amount that I could use to get that the R and the L is sigma closed discrete, okay? So, if I could take R and tau, okay, the right-looking points just working with those, and be able to write that as a union of countable spaces, because tau means is that sigma closed discrete, so countable union of these things, okay? And for every point in there, I can find this neighborhood that fits in between there, and such that if you take any decreasing sequence of these things, okay? At a particular level, alright? Then what's going to happen here is, is that if I can, if you can show that these things are point finite, then you're going to get that R and tau is, or the right-looking neighborhoods here, or the points that have, the set that has right-looking neighborhoods, is going to be sigma closed discrete, okay, in this subset of X. And so, if you add the sigma closed discrete dense subset, you're going to get the trisability. And of course, same thing works if you're looking to the left ones there, you just have to reverse the inequalities, and everything works the same way in that one, okay? So, alright, so I'm going to put that there again. Just as Bennett, let's kind of go through it and see how we're going to do, how we pick these V of P's, okay? So Bennett, Hart, Lutz, and Lee, alright? The lambda K's were just everything, R and tau's were all K. And then what you do is, is you look at the monotone operator, okay? And you just pick any neighborhood in this monotone operator that contains P, that has to be a subset of that, okay? And then you can use the fact that this monotone, these things will refine all the right-looking neighborhoods there, and you can get point finite from that because of the monotonicity, okay? So, then what I did was, is using this pair base here, so this is your sigma NSR pair base, then what you do is, is well, you lift some number of the pair base that contains B's in subset here, let your V of P in this here just be the first coordinate, okay? And, well, what's my unit, or how do I, it's not really a provision that I'm claiming here, but your lambda K is, well, just collect the Ps that this came with the B's and K. And, a little bit of work, but then you can show that these, these things, they're getting decreasing sequence because you always have to have a finite number of these things that have to cover. Well, they're a subset of, well, you can go down to a finite level there, and everything else to the right won't be a subset of the finite set that you work with, okay? So, alright, so, alright, okay, so, what I'm about to show you was already made for this theorem. Just to show you, what can we, what is there, is there a property out there that's going to satisfy this? Well, I kind of cheated and made this in a certain way, because there is a property, it's the NZ property, okay? And Chuchin and Gary showed this for any kappa here, but the omega, or the countable infinite one is the one that's pretty interesting here. Alright, so the N comes from these neighborhood assignments, okay? That you, look at these pairs, you've got any collection of these pairs, you made an open neighborhood of the X's there, alright? Then what I'm going to be able to do, okay? Is I can cover the index set by kappa many things, okay? And I can find these neighborhoods here, okay? That contain X of lambda, okay? And it's a subset of U. So you see these pair things going here. And what you have here is, is that if you take any sequence in a particular level, okay? Such that if you took the X's, the X's are not in the previous ones that you picked, okay? Then the, the neighborhood that you put in between X and U has to be empty, okay? Alright, so this looks somewhat of a very technical sort of definition here. But if you, like kappa be equal to omega, and if you study D-spaces, this is actually exactly what you need for a D-space, okay? The other thing I want to talk about here is that kappa is finite, alright? Then, you know, any finite number that you take here to cover lambda here, then they're all equivalent definitions. So they call that the NZ property here, okay? So, back to what I was talking about here, very technical element here. But if you're studying D-spaces, that's exactly what you're doing, is you're building up from the open neighborhood assignment, you're building up sets. And you're always taking points outside of the neighborhoods, in the open neighborhood assignment that you picked before. And if you can get this property, then you're going to get a D-space, okay? So, very natural, I know it looks pretty complicated or technical there, but it's very natural when you're studying D-spaces. And it is a hereditary property, okay? So, but if you take a look at this, it really is property B, okay? The only thing here is that if these things are not empty, that these things have to cover the X of lambdas, alright? So, these are equivalent, property B is equivalent to the NZ property, okay? So, taking a look at the NZ property, well, then the NZ omega property is sort of the proper countable version of the property B, okay? Right, oh, and by the way, both of these imply that the space is hereditary in every fact, alright? So, and of course, if you come back over here, take a look at this property again. These are my V's and P's, okay? And this will ensure that the V's and P's will be point finite. Then you take a decreasing sequence, alright? So then the Rs and the Ls are going to be sigma closed discrete, and we get to this, what I was a bit surprised about is for G O spaces with a sigma closed discrete dense subset, the NZ omega property implies a trisability, alright? And I was a little surprised because this property is much weaker than the ones we were, or Tim and Gary were looking at in the paper, okay? So, where do we go from here, right? So I was trying to tie up some loose ends, right? Well, one thing is, is Pygo spaces. Pygo spaces, which one is it, Pygo? Pygo, you like Pygo, okay? So, Gary, Bernard, David, Lutz, study perfect images of G O spaces, alright? So perfect images of G O spaces includes metrizable spaces, includes spaces with monotonic unormal compactifications. So some of the stuff that you might see in literature here, alright? So, I take a look at this, okay? So this is a natural generalization in G O spaces, going the other direction there, okay? So, with the sigma NSR pair base and a sigma closed discrete dense subset, you can show that the space is metrizable. And usually, it's using techniques that Gary and David used in their paper, because they had a really nice theorem that when you, you have a G O space, and you want to lift that up through a perfect map, well, you can lift up bases, okay? Pretty nicely, and a lot of times, you preserve that property of the base. So you can do the same thing with pair bases. So if I have a sigma NSR pair base in the Pygo space, I can lift it up, give a sigma NSR pair base in the G O space. The sigma closed discrete dense subset also lifts up, that's something that Gary and David also showed. So then you get that the G O space must be metrizable, so when you push it down with a perfect mapping, the space also has to be metrizable. So I was actually thinking, well, I got it for G O spaces, maybe I could do something similar with this NZ omega property, okay? Well, I can't, alright? So it is an open question. Pygo spaces with a sigma closed discrete dense subset and the NZ property, are those metrizable? And the reason why is the NZ property doesn't, doesn't lift, okay? To, to the G O space. The reason why is a really, so Sheldon Davis, David Lutz, oh, I forgot Hal Bennett. Hal Bennett was also on the paper. So my apologies to Hal if he's watching. So Hal Bennett was also on this paper here, that, alright, so you take omega 1 plus 1, it's not hereditarily metacapac, so it's not going to have the NZ property. Or the NZ omega property is hereditarily metalingual, so it doesn't even have that hereditarily, okay? So, but if you take that, and you identify all the limit points to one point, what you end up is a one-point compactification of a discrete set of the size omega 1, okay? So, so this is an example here. This has the NZ omega property, okay? But this space does not, so the NZ omega property doesn't lift. So we need some sort of new technique to be able to answer this question. Maybe true, I don't know, I don't have a, counter any, any example of mine that I work here. So, but, well, one of the things I fear, okay? And I'm just going to put this up here, is, well, maybe we're just finding complicated ways to prove old theorems, okay? So the NSR base, the theorem of Sub-orbital Rank, Gary and Peter actually had a paper on that when they were looking at spaces, when spaces with this sigma NSR are low-ranked bases are metrizable, alright? So, I have examples from the right that don't apply the left because the paper of Gary, Sheldon, and Peter, they have a space that has a sigma disjoint base that is not metacapac, satisfies these, but can't satisfy those. And then of course, the bottom line doesn't apply above regions there. But I don't have any examples of when, to reverse any of these properties from the NSR pair base or up to an NSR base, okay? I think these might be equivalent in G O spaces, comes out of very close in my paper. But we don't know if these two are equivalent in, well, the countable, we should be in parentheses there. There you are, this is my bad title, don't matter. So, but I don't know any, any examples. An space that has an NSR pair base, okay? That's not monotonically countably metacapac, or monotonically metrified, or so on and so forth. So, this region here, I don't know if any of those reverse or not, alright? So, my fear is that these are all the same thing, and we've just proved in a more complicated way something that Gary and Peter did. But I'm hopeful that it's not, because if you look at locally finite versions of these, we do have counterexamples to those, okay? So, maybe it's just a matter of understanding these properties a little bit more. Alright, so I'm going to throw up these, and I think I have them for the day. Any questions? I think it's Bennett, Davis, and Lutz and him. Our next talk will be in five minutes.
Okay, our next speaker is David Milovich speaking on pin homogeneity.
Thank you. Thanks to the organizers, thanks to the biographers. Alright, problem always, dear to my heart is a large homogeneous compacta. So, a big compact space where all points are the same in the sense of an audio homomorphism can take one point to any other point. So from one point of view, no problem, any compact space fits inside a big power of the Hilbert cube which is homogeneous. But from another point of view, no, we can't really find them. It's not clear why. I think a version of this question that really gets at the heart of the matter is in one of Kuhn's papers. Is every compact space X a continuous image of a compact homogeneous space? So instead of being coinitial in the category of compact Hausdorff spaces with continuous maps, are the homogeneous ones also cofinal? And this is connected with an older question of Eric van Daals' one. Can you have a compact homogeneous space with more than continuum maning disjointed open sets? And another old question of Walther Rudin's. Is there an infinite compact homogeneous space with no nontrivial convergent omega sequence? Question my own along these lines. Could you have the neighborhood filter of a point in a compact and homogeneous space be anything other than in the maximum Tukey class possible? And the most important result I think in this area is that spaces like beta N where like means also in F space, you can't have them as an infinite compact homogeneous space. The cute version is Froelich and independently Marielle Rudin that if you have an ultra-filter, non-principle U, then U is not a U-limit of other non-principle ultra-filters. But by compactness, there are U-limits of non-principle ultra-filters. So not homogeneous. And this just gets generalized to all F spaces. And then Kuhn generalizes much more. I'm not even stating the full strength of this theorem here. But if you take a product of one or more infinite compact F-spaces, so disjointed open F-sigmas have disjointed convergence in these F-spaces, and zero or more first countable spaces, that product is not homogeneous. And the proof uses Rudin-Kisler incomparable weak P-points. So a weak P-point just means not a limit point of a countable set. And there's a bunch of other results you can say about our meager progress in this area. You don't need to know all these for the rest of the talk. The point is there are some cardinality restrictions you can prove. Not all of these even need compactness, but they do all need homogeneity. I've got one very weak result about what you can say about the Tukey classes of neighborhood filters you assume GCH. Some interesting in the sense of, you know, let's get beyond, say, compact groups which are always CCC and of course beyond compact metric spaces. You can have a big linearly ordered homogeneous compact space, but not really big. Only cellular E-continuum doesn't mean they'll get harder than that. Any zero-dimensional first countable space Y has a homogeneous infinite product. There's some weird things you can do that aren't going to automatically give you big cellular E, but they're interesting weird constructions. But it's still a long way to go in this area.
And you don't mean compact in the Galou-Fernos result?
Right, right. The way I phrase the slide ahead put compact in there to make it correct, but the way I said it verbally, that we don't mean compact. Same for some of these cardinal qualities. The one that really needs compactness is the personal by Villavega. And so one approach to keep, you know, proving theorems in this area despite getting so stuck is back away a little bit from homogeneous. So, well, what about having a homogeneous power? Well, then Kuhn's result automatically still holds. Those cardinal qualities I showed, they still hold. So still some things you can say. But it still seems just as hard to come up with a really big even power homogeneous compact space. Okay, here is a... Another way you could go, this is going too far, I think. Instead of homogeneity, where you're talking about points being the same as other points, you could just say, well, do we have a base where all the elements in the base are the same? In that there's a auto-homomorphism sending one to the other. No, you don't need that. It's even weirder. They're all homomorphic to each other. Now, every compact space is a continuous image of a B homogeneous or base homogeneous compact space. You can just take a product of X with something so that all the open sets have the same size, and then there'll be a continuous image of uniform ultra-filters on just a big discrete set. And the space of uniform ultra-filters on a discrete set. Well, I guess it was meritorious, you know, that thing there. Uniform just means every set in the ultra-filter has the same cardinality. But that's going to be an F-space, so based homogeneous is compatible being a compact F-space. So analog of Kuhn's theorem that fails. So I think this is going too far. What I want to do is look at something a little less extreme than this. And still have some of, say, Kuhn's theorem about F-spaces and compactness and homogeneity not all going together. So this is my version of weakening it. I call it pin homogeneity to try and explain the definition. You don't demand a homomorphism of X to X taking point A to point B. Instead, you say, there's some bigger space Y, and X is a quotient of Y. That's the requirement. Between compact spaces, continuous surjection equals quotient map. And except at A and B, where the map, the quotient map needs to be invertible, every point in X will have possibly a very large preimage in Y. So I think of it as X gets inflated to Y except at A and B. A and B just have singles and preimages. And then the homomorphism lives in this space Y. So the homomorphism Y to Y sends the preimage of A to the preimage of B. Now, if you do that, notice that Y could depend on A and B. So that's pretty weak. Interestingly, this is a local property. That's not too hard to prove. It's a little tricky to prove that this is actually a transitive property. Because for A and B and B and C, you use different Ys. You do something with a fiber product, but you can get to go through. I haven't actually used the fact that it's transitive yet though, so I don't know if that's important to the theory of this thing. And we'll say something is pin homogeneous if any two points are pin equivalent. So let's see an example of this. Closed interval 0 to 4 has two kinds of points, interior points and the two boundary points. Well, with pin homogeneity, then they become all the same. So for example, we take interior point 1 and point 4, and the quotient map is going to go from this funny subset of the Cartesian square of our interval down to our interval just by the coordinate projection. So I have these three fancy components there. Just taking the first coordinate, that's my quotient map. And you'll notice that 1 has only one thing in the preimage, 4 has only one thing in the preimage. Other points could have more, like two things in the preimage there. And you'll notice that I didn't pick just any subset of the Cartesian square. This is a symmetric subset, right? You flip the X and Y coordinates, get the same set. So the audio homomorphism just flips the coordinates. We just take the reflection about this diagonal, and we will map our preimage of 1 up there to our preimage of 4. Now surprisingly, there's a sense in which every instance of pin homogeneity can be witnessed in this form. If points are pin equivalent, then actually you can arrange that F, the quotient map, is just the first coordinate projection. And that it came from a symmetric enclosed subset of the square and that the audio homomorphism of that symmetric enclosed subset of the square is just the flipping the coordinates, coordinate transition. And we have proved this is with a Symbolian algebraist. What I do is I think about just neighborhood bases. It doesn't matter whether they're open neighborhoods or closed neighborhoods or something like that. And I take kind of a hybrid of, say, Tukey equivalence and forcing equivalence, you might say. And so the requirement is, given my two filter bases, you could think about not just them, but their Boolean combinations, right? Extend to a sub-algebra, the power set algebra of your space, right? And not all the sets in there will be open or closed, right? Because you have complements and so on. And the abstract Boolean version of it would be, okay, two filters in a Boolean algebra extend to a bigger Boolean algebra. And you want to have, even if it's just two filter bases, you want that the filters they generate in the bigger algebra are the same in the sense that there's an automorphism of the whole bigger Boolean algebra that sends the one filter to the other. And you can use that, such an automorphism of such a Boolean algebra, to actually get one of these symmetric closed sets. All of this very heavily assumes compactness, by the way. You need basically the version of the tube lemma for preimage of the continuous functions. And as a result of this, in contrast to actual homogeneity, if you just take a big enough power of any compact space, you get pin homogeneity because you will have an independent local subbase at each point. And by independent, I mean in the Boolean sense, where you take some elements of the subbase and some complements of other elements of the subbase, and the intersection of all those is not empty. So what you get is that actually the subalgebra generated by your two neighborhood bases will actually just be essentially two free Boolean algebras living inside a slightly bigger Boolean algebra. In this special case, you don't even need a proper Boolean extension of the subalgebra generated. And this connects to Tukey equivalence in that if two points are pin equivalent, then their neighborhood filters are Tukey equivalent. And interestingly, it's actually strictly stronger. I thought of it as initially an algebra problem. I need to cook up a Boolean algebra with two ultra-filters that are Tukey equivalent but not pin equivalent. But I found that it was actually easier just to do it topologically. The little space that helped me out was you take binary sequences of length omega 1 with lexicographic order and give it the order topology. And there are points in there where they're the limit from the right and the left of sequences of length omega 1. And those points are what I will call Hausdorff points, meaning they are in the intersection of the increasing, intersection of the closures and two increasing unions of closed sets that are disjointed. And that's a property preserved by pin equivalence. Again, very heavily relying on compactness to prove that. But there are other points in there, even after you take the product of Cantor set, that aren't like that, right? You can have a point where it's a limit of stuff, of a sequence of length omega on one side and a limit of a sequence of length omega 1 on the other side. And taking the product with the Cantor set won't change this Hausdorff property there. Okay, what about F-spaces? So if I assume CH, I can show that infinite compact F-spaces are still not pin homogeneous. The reason I needed CH was just so I could get Rudin-Kisler incomparable selective ultra-filters, which aren't going to exist in ZFC. Now, if you actually have a weak P-point in your F-space though, then it would be much easier because pin equivalence preserves the property of being a weak P-point. So beta N minus N, and just about all the other F-spaces that I think people care about have weak P-points. But there are weird F-spaces that don't, so... I don't have this for all F-spaces yet unless I go beyond ZFC. I'd be interested if I could make it work in ZFC or if one of you could make it work in ZFC. And where I want to go in the future with this, besides that part about the Rudin-Kisler incomparable selective ultra-filters during the F set, would be what if we strengthen pin homogeneity? So you had that quotient map F, but what if we put some additional conditions on it? Ask for it to be open or ask for it to be quasi-open, parameterize the definition a little bit. And then you make it harder to be pin homogeneous because now you've got to be open pin homogeneous or quasi-open pin homogeneous. So the hope is that maybe we could get a little more traction on a very hard problem about large homogeneous compacta. Looking at some somewhat flexible weakening versions of homogeneity. I think we need to go stronger than just Tukey equivalence of points, i.e. Tukey equivalent neighborhood filters. So I've gotten it stronger by looking at pin equivalence, which is a Boolean property, not just an order property. And I suspect that if you actually demand open, then it's going to be essentially as hard as the original large homogeneous compacta problem. But I'm wondering if I can see if it's a little weaker, like quasi-open, if I can still make some progress in the future. And that concludes my last slide. So thank you for your time.
Any questions? I have, please.
In the convention Walther Rudin's, there's a question about compact homogenies doesn't contain a convergence sequence, right? It's a stupid question probably, but could there be a homogeneous F-mob space contains neither a convergence sequence nor a top space?
There is a lot of questions I would have loved to put on the slides, but I couldn't in 20 minutes. We should read Jan van Mille's survey article on this, right? I should review that list myself to see if I can check each one for pin homogeneity, of course.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Okay, the next talk will be ended in 10 minutes.
Okay, the next talk will be in about 10 minutes.
One subset of D and make an ultrafilter out of it. Trace, then throw it into the filter, and then you generate an ultrafilter. That's pretty close to being maximal. And this is nowhere maximal. You cannot do it for any single one. And then it's fairly easy to show that you cannot even do it throwing in countably many. So this is pretty far from being an ultrafilter. And then this question is equivalent to this other. Well, okay, back to the original thing here. Is every point of Omega star a butterfly point? But once you start phrasing it this way, what's so special about on Omega? What happens if we just throw away on Omega? And that gives you a problem one that was on the abstract. And that is just simply, is every field ultrafilter the join of two nowhere maximal filters? Now, I would think that somewhere along the line, some set theorists long ago thought about this question. But who knows? Maybe they were interested in other aspects of ultrafilters. And this sort of topological question is as close as anybody got to it. It's equivalent. And, okay. Why is it phrased like this? Because already back in 1980, Vaschik and Shumansky showed that Omega star does have butterfly points. Here's another thing that sort of motivates things. To have a butterfly point, it's enough just to have a sequence of X of N converging to X. You take the even ones and the odd points, and then those will be two disjointed. And together with the limit point, you've got two disjointed closed sets that satisfy the definition of a butterfly point. So then, the question, so this becomes a, well, only the star is the Stone Check remainder of the integers. And of course, doesn't have any nontrivial convergent sequences. But it has been shown that it does have butterfly points in ZFC. But this problem has been open for a long time. And then, so one thing is that, look at related problems, number two. If you have, well, equivalently first of all to the problem one in the abstract. Is every non-isolated point of beta D a butterfly point for every discrete space D? And then there's another question, which is, has been actually more popular among topologists. Is every point of beta D minus D a non-normality point for every discrete space D? In other words, you just have a point there, a point in beta D minus D. You throw it out. How could that be a non-normality point? Well, since compact spaces are normal, the only way this could be non-normal is for you to have these two disjointed subsets, both subsets of space minus the one point. Have these two disjointed relatively closed subsets that cannot be put into disjointed open sets. And they, being disjointed after X is thrown out, well, the only thing in their closure would be X itself. And so you'd have to have a butterfly point. If one of these didn't have X in the closure, well, you should just take the closure of the other one. And I got two disjointed closed sets in a compact space, which could put them into disjointed open sets. And so the question number two, if you have a yes, that every point is a non-normality point, then you also have yes to this classic problem. Is every point of Omega star a butterfly point? And then, just look at your notes. GCH implies yes to two, and there's a reference there. And Lynn, who's our next speaker, was the one who told me in October about this, first of all, about the more general problem, where you throw away this on Omega, then just ask in general. And then she had told me about this Schmogic and Van Daalen paper, where they actually show not just GCH. They had something more general there, but GCH is a nice, easy way to summarize. All right, so then comes problem number two. Does every infinite compact Hausser space have a butterfly point? See, the first, this problem, the classic problem without the Omega star, asks whether all the points of the Stone Check remainder of a discrete space are butterfly points. And, well, Stone Check remainder will have some butterfly points, because whatever D is, you just take a countable subset, you take its closure. That's homomorphic to beta Omega, and then that has a butterfly point. And so, of course, if you have a butterfly point in a closed subspace, that's a butterfly point in all space. So, okay, but why is problem two phrased the way it is? It's because the last point of Omega 1 plus 1 is not isolated and is not a butterfly point. So you have to ask problem two in this way. Does every infinite one have a butterfly point? And in fact, there's a consistent example due to Fedorichuk that they're using diamond, where you've got a counterexample. And this one, notice the year, 1976 also. But it was actually announced by UCAS at the 1975 Memphis conference. And I perked up, well, it wasn't described this way. The butterfly point is mentioned. What was said was that Fedorichuk had this amazing space using, well, V equals L was enough to do. And it turned out that the axiom was equivalent to diamond. He had shown, he had constructed this amazing infinite compact space in which every infinite closed subspace was a dimension greater than zero. And so that eliminates a copy of Omega plus one. It eliminates convergent sequences, in other words. And it also eliminates copying of Omega. And that made it an F-Moff space. So, and in fact, if you have a, I'm saying, mentioning this here, that every, any counterexample to problem two is an F-Moff space. By definition, that means an infinite compact Hausser space without a copy of either Omega plus one or beta Omega. And actually, well, back in 76, in that first issue I made, number one classic problem was, is there an F-Moff space? And it's still unsolved. And so, problem two might be sort of a consolation prize today. You might be able to show that it's consistent that every infinite compact Hausser space had a butterfly point. And that would at least encourage you, looking at the model that works, to see whether, in fact, you can eliminate all F-Moff spaces that way. Okay, now, what I want to take you over pretty quickly here is the place on your notes where I'm showing you why this is a translation. Just leaving off the on Omega, that is every field is a joint of two nowhere maximal filters. The other one is, if you have, do you have, is every point of beta D a butterfly point? So first correspondence, any point of D will, let's see. That should be point of, yeah, point of beta D. That's what it should be. So you have point of beta D. Of course, that's what it should be. This goes with ultrafilter, ultrafilter on D. But also, in fact, this is one thing, one definition of beta D is, is the underlying set of all the ultrafilters on D. And it should, and then I go to the language of Boolean algebra and talk about ultrafilter of P of D. So, ultrafilter, thinking of it as a Boolean algebra. Oh, P of D. Okay, and then a free ultrafilter on D would be the same thing as a non-principle ultrafilter of P of D. Then comes, if you have a subset of D, then you have that corresponding to a cloven subset of beta D. So K containing D corresponds to cloven A bar, A closure in beta D. Okay, now, something that's less well-known is that if you have a filter on D, that corresponds to a closed subset of beta D. And I give the argument in the notes. The thing is that every, if you have a filter on D, you've got a filter of cloven sets, which live in the Boolean algebra of the, all the cloven subsets of beta D. And then you have a closed set. First of all, it's going to be an intersection of cloven sets because of zero dimensionality, but also because of compactness. If you have cloven sets that close down on a closed set, they actually form a base for all the neighborhoods of that closed set. And that's what helps with the correspondence. Now, here's something that didn't get all the handout. And it goes like this. If you have a nowhere maximal filter on D, that means it doesn't trace a, doesn't trace an ultrafilter on any subset of D that corresponds to a closed subset, okay, let's call this thing script F, closed subset F star of beta D without points in the, without, without points isolated in the relative topology of F star. This didn't get into the notes that you had. Relative topology of F star. And here's a little picture that sort of illustrates that. If you have F star, F star is a closed set. Here's F star. Script F star. Now suppose it did have an isolated point. What could you do? Remember that this F star is the intersection of all the cloven sets containing it. And then it corresponds to a filter back on D. You just put one subset of D, let's call this D zero, which only, it'll be, so this is actually D zero bar here. This is the closure of D zero, and it's a cloven set. And if you add that to the filter of all these cloven sets that contain F star, then you've got yourself an ultrafilter that way. And so, and that, of course, that's not the same thing as nowhere maximal. In fact, this violates nowhere maximal. So then, that's where you get that without points isolated in the relative topology of F star. And then it becomes fairly easy to show the, it going the other way. All right, well, let's see. We've got some time here. So look at the big theorem here is that if you've got a non-isolated point of beta D, then the following are equivalent. Of course, being non-isolated has to be in the remainder. And so, in the remainder, you have, butterfly point will then be just as, it'll, it'll have to be a butterfly point in either of those things, either in the remainder or in beta D itself. And then number three is the join of two nowhere maximal filters. Now, I'm talking in the rest of the notes about translations of problem two. First of all, into the language of Boolean algebra. And then, but that's only for the zero-dimensional case. Now, what about the general case? Well, the general case, there's this well-known correspondence that brings analysis into the picture. It talks about commutative C-star algebra. And those are known to correspond, they will be of this following form. You take all the continuous functions on a compact space and give it the suit norm topology. Okay, now, once you, once you've nailed them down, then the question is, which compact space are you dealing with? And in the old one in Jerusalem, there's this beautiful thing about how you get maximal ideals of this ring, which you don't really see the compact space in it yet, but it's a ring. And you look at the maximal ideals, and you've got this topology on the maximal ideals, and that'll give you K. Okay, but there you need the ring structure. You can also do it, and this didn't get into the notes, you can also do it if you look at isometry. If, if this is isometric to C of H, again, with the suit, with this suit norm, then H is homomorphic to K. And of course, the converse is trivial. This is well-known to analysts, but I didn't know about it until I started asking the analysts in my department about it. If it's isometric, then you've got this. But unfortunately, what people are really, analysts seem to be more interested in linear homomorphisms. What sorts of things are linearly homomorphic to each other? And there, there's a big problem. We cannot do it. So look at these two extremes. Yeah, thank you. So here are these two extremes. Every non-isolated point of beta is a butterfly point. And the other one, that's one, and then two of K, has no butterfly points. Of course, to make this interesting, K has to be infinite, but anyway. Now, it would be really nice if linear homomorphism of these spaces here would preserve these properties, either this or this one. But it doesn't preserve either one. And there's a very simple thing that goes on here. If you have, let's just say you have two points, P zero, P one. Now, this is your space K, compact space K. Suppose these are not butterfly points. You can produce a butterfly point by identifying these. So this would be like P zero comma P one, you might call it that. And then one other point out here, call this H. Well, C of K is linearly homomorphic to C of H. But if, if this is like an Omega one plus one, if this is the only non-butterfly point, you put them together, and now you've got a butterfly point there, the whole space, every non-isolated point is a butterfly point. Or this could be two copies of F-Moff, not Fedorichuk space, where there aren't any butterfly points. You pick two points there, you put them together, now you've got one butterfly point. And this still works. There's a reasonably simple proof, which by the way, on your handouts, I've got on my webpage where you can access the full article, and that will give you details about this. Okay, so that's, that's all. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, one, you have on the front page that GCH implies less of two, and yes to two implies one. Does one, is one known to hold under CH?
Well, yeah, in fact, it's, it holds under GCH.
GCH is stronger than CH.
Well, yeah, I know. So if it holds under GCH, oh, sorry, yes, yes, of course, it does hold under CH. Absolutely, thank you.
Are you sure? Don't you mean a classic problem?
Yeah, okay, this is the question.
No, no, generally, not B to D.
Um. Okay, so, so the thing is, if D is just Omega, then CH is good enough. Yes, definitely. All right, any other question? Yes?
Do you prefer any special options?
Say it again?
The answer to problem nine. So is every point of Omega star a butterfly point? Do you know in ZFC that every minimal ultrafilter is a butterfly point?
No, that's, yeah, I haven't been able to see much about that. There is, there is quite a literature there about butterfly points. These are just the highlights. And perhaps it's already in the old literature that about certain, there are certain kinds of points. If it's not a key point, then it will be, no, no, it's not quite that strong.
That's the limit of a discrete Hausser space.
If you have a point in, yes, in the Stone Check remainder that's the limit of a countable subset.
Discrete.
This countable discrete subset. So it's like Ruden-Frolic order type thing. Then, yes, it will be a butterfly point. The idea is you get this copy of beta Omega, and there's enough room outside for things to come in and give you a butterfly point. Each, each of those points will be butterfly points. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so our last talk this afternoon is by Lynn Yang, the last. Did I?
It's hard to get in that second now.
Finally, closed spaces and domain representability.
All right, thanks very much to the organizers and for everybody for sticking around for the last talk of the session. First, let me advertise a summer conference. Registration is open, so when you get home from the spring conference, why not register for the summer conference? And this is early, but you can also pencil in the 2019 summer conference. It'll be in South Africa, so early July. Put it in your calendars. Okay, so I'm going to talk about some topological completeness properties today. So I want to start by introducing generalized completeness. So if you're talking about metric spaces, then it's complete if every Koshi sequence converges to a point in the space. But in more general spaces, you might not have a metric, of course. And so, some generalized notions of completeness also talk about some things converging. It's just that those things may be, well, more general. So typically, some particular collections of open sets converge in the space, or they have non-empty intersection in the space. So you might say that every strongly nested sequence of open sets converges in the space. By strongly nested, I mean this sort of closure nested property that we use a lot. So I'll say U two is closure less than U one, and closure of U two is than U one. So for example, a compact space, or even a countably compact space, would have this completeness property. Completeness properties might come from topological games. I actually went to Choke, because that's the one we'll use. But I'll define a game precisely later. But you might say that every nested sequence of open sets, that sort of follows a winning strategy for non-empty. In the Choke game, has non-empty intersection in the space. That's something called Choke complete. Something more general than a nested sequence of open sets is a filter base. So a regular filter base is a collection of open sets that has a property that given any two, there's a third whose closure is inside the intersection of F one and F two. If every regular filter base has non-empty intersection in the space, that's a sort of complete property. And particular compact spaces have that property. Something a little bit more general is the completeness property of subcompactness. If you don't say all regular filter bases converge in the space, you say just that there is some special base B for which every filter base consisting of sets from B has non-empty intersection in the space, then we call the space subcompact. You might refer to that special base as a subcompact base. So a lot of the questions I'm interested in involve this subcompact property. But, well, an alternative title to my talk could be that proving a space is subcompact is hard. So there's a slightly weaker property that I'm going to try and motivate from this one. Suppose I did something strange, and, you know, I had my base. The base is a set, after all. And I sort of index those basic open sets with themselves. Okay, then I could imagine the basic open sets as an index set for the sets themselves. And talking about the order on the indices, it would be maybe that closure less than order. And filter bases would become directed sets in the index set. Okay, so this is a bit artificial. Why would you do that? Well, there's another completeness property that's sort of described in this way. If I have a space and a special base, it's special because it comes with an index set Q. And there's an order on the index set such that when you take a directed collection of indices, it maps to a collection of open sets with non-empty intersection in the space. That's a completeness property, and it happens to be equivalent to domain representability, if you're familiar with that. Well, I haven't given any details about special, but I'll define it precisely in a second. So here's, here's the deal. When you're trying to prove that something is subcompact, like for example, right now it's still open whether or not, I'll check complete spaces are subcompact. The thing that you have to do is you have to define the base. And then from there, you stand back and you just cross your fingers and hope that every regular filter base converges, right? Your only control is what you put into the base. Whereas if you're proving domain representability, you get to choose your open sets cleverly, and you also get to tinker around with the order on your index set. And you can do a lot of stuff over here that sort of trims down the amounts of, you know, filter bases that need to have non-empty intersection. So in that way, domain representability is easier to prove than self-compactness. Okay, so let me give you some actual definitions then. This, this is. This is, at least, when Bill Fleischer and I are studying domain representability, we produce this definition. So Q is not a domain, but having a representation of this sort is equivalent to being domain representable. So we say that a triple Q, I'll call this way below, that'll be the relation on the index that, and B is a map from the indices to a base, represents a space if the following things hold. The first three just say that the index set Q indexes a base for the space. Higher indices map to smaller open sets. This here says that if you fix a point, then the indices associated with the neighborhood system need to be a directed set of indices. And then the blue thing is the completeness part. If you have a directed set of indices, then it maps to a collection of open sets with a non-empty intersection. Okay, so I thought today that I would show you that, you know, building these representations is kind of fun. In fact, you could build these index sets from playing topological games. I think that that's what makes it fun. And so I'm going to go through a couple proofs. But first, I better tell you really what the Chokey game is, if you're not familiar. The Chokey game is a two-player game played on the space X. The players are named empty and non-empty. And empty goes first, choosing a non-empty open set in the space and a point inside. Non-empty must respond with a non-empty open set containing that point and contained within the open set U not. Non-empty doesn't get to choose a point, or he can tribulally win. And they continue in this manner, making a decreasing sequence of non-empty open sets. If the intersection is non-empty, then the non-empty player wins. And non-empty having a strategy, winning strategy is what quantifies the completeness of the space. Okay, so let me talk about some of the things I want to prove. So first, Kim Mark, who was studying domain representability as a topological completeness property, and he showed that it implies that the non-empty player has a winning strategy in the Chokey game. And in that way, domain representability ends up being equivalent to complete metrizability in metric spaces, for example. What about a converse to that? So Bennett and Lussner showed that if the non-empty player has a special sort of winning strategy, G, it's not important what it is, in the Chokey game, and the space has a G delta diagonal, then from that, you can prove domain representability of the space. And then Bill and I improved that by showing that if the non-empty player has any winning strategy at all on a space with a G delta diagonal, then X is domain representable. And I'd like to just warm up with a sketch of the proof of this one, just to show you how you build a domain, or a representation, rather, let's say. So this level is going to be helpful. It says that if the non-empty player can win the Chokey game, and it's on a space with a G delta diagonal, then he can win in such a way that the intersection of the play is a single tip. So let's try and prove that if a space is Chokey complete and has a G delta diagonal, then it has this sort of representation. So we're coming in with this sort of completeness. If we ever encounter a decreasing collection of open sets, it sort of matches a play of the Chokey game, then it will have non-empty intersection. And we're aiming to build some sort of special indexing of base such that this happens. Well, the level that I just mentioned is going to help me in this stage of the proof. If I manage to prove that any increasing sequence of indices points to a decreasing sequence of sets that has a non-empty intersection, then it's an easy step after that to prove that the full, you know, any directed collection of indices points to a non-empty intersection. So what I want to do is I want to take my winning strategy, somehow build Q and the indexing so that any time I take an increasing sequence of indices, this intersection of the corresponding open sets is non-empty. Well, okay, if I want the indexing to somehow match the strategy to get a non-empty intersection, then a natural guess is to maybe make an index Q be a partial play of the game. Q could be, you know, a finite partial play of the game, and the very last set in that partial play could be called BQ. And that way, well, more thing, if Q hat is a partial play that properly extends Q, then I could say that Q is way below Q hat. And that way, if I had an increasing sequence of indices, I'd really be looking at an increasing, you know, sequence of partial plays, which would be a play of the game. And that way, this intersection would be non-empty, I guess. But that's not going to work because I need for the collection of indices pointing to a neighborhood system around any point to be directed. And so here's where the problem happens. If I want Q to be a partial play of the game, and P to be another partial play of the game, ending in the Q and VP respectively, how am I going to come up with, you know, another play that extends both simultaneously if these two sets are not compatible? I mean, these two sets, unless they're nested, wouldn't necessarily show up in the same play of the game. So this isn't going to work. But a quick fix is that I could make Q, instead of being a single partial play, I could make it a finite collection of partial plays, all ending in the same BQ. So Q is actually a finite set of partial plays, all ending in BQ. And then it would mean for R to extend Q, for example. R is another finite collection of partial plays ending in this. And any partial play for Q is extended by some partial play in R. And that fixes this problem, and it actually gets, you know, what we wanted originally. If you've got an increasing sequence of indices that are finite collections of partial plays, I can extract a partial play from here, extend it with a play here, extend it with a play here, and get my play of the game, and the intersection of these will be non-empty. Okay, so that's a proof sketch of this theorem. It's how to take a winning strategy and build from it a sort of domain representation. And I, now, we were talking about transfinite games in another talk. I think that you could do this exact proof if the space has a, what was it, an Orchard base or something like that? Yeah, yeah. You could extend the Chokey game in a natural way. I think that that's supposed to... But that's a different talk. Okay, now for the other items in the title. So people in this room might be familiar with these terms. A network is like a base, but the sets don't have to be open. Saying that a space is cosmic is saying that it has a countable network. And Polish space is a set of a completely metrizable space. So Kotchuk introduced this term called cofindly Polish. It says that X is cofindly Polish if whenever you map it continuously onto a second countable space M, there's a Polish space sort of in between in this way. If you've got F continuous from X to second countable, then you can find a Polish space, a continuous map to G and H like this. And then I think at last Spring Topology, Kotchuk told Jila and me about his proof that a cosmic space that was subcompact would be cofindly Polish. And we were able to improve that to domain representable and show the converse. So I wanted to go through that direction of the argument to show you how you build, again, a sort of a representation of a space if you have this cofindly Polish property. Okay, so there's going to be an important level that's going to help us get this done. So in a cosmic space at least, having this cofindly Polish property, well, you can prove that you have this much stronger thing that's stated here. If you have any countable collection of open sets in X, you can find a Polish topology that sits in between the original topology and those countably many open sets. So that's going to be the level that's key to trying to build a representation. I might skip through talking to the proof because of time. So let's suppose that we have, which direction am I doing? I should have stated it, I apologize. I'm doing, I'm supposing that the space is cosmic and cofindly Polish, and I'm going to build a representations for it. Okay, so let me start with finite sequences of open sets. And those are going to take the place of the partial plays in the previous proof. So R is going to be all finite sequences of open sets. And I'm going to think of an individual sequence of open sets. I'll use the letter S for sequence. And I'll think of it as a function from a natural number into the topology. And Q is going to be some collection of finite collections of these sequences, similar to the previous proof. But I got to tell you which ones we gathered together to serve as the indices. Okay, so for each of the finite sequences, with the lema, we can define a Polish topology that contains the sets in the sequence and is coarser than the topology. And we'll do it in such a way so that if S, the sequence S, extends a sequence R, then the Polish topology on F is finer than the topology on R. And these are all second countable topologies, so the lema can help us do this. And then I'll fix a complete metric generating tau S for each of the sequences. Okay, so we're coming in with finite sequences of open sets, and I fix a Polish topology and a complete metric generating it for each one. Now what I'm going to try and do is gather together certain finite collections of these sequences. First off, I'd like for the sequences all to end in the same open set. So this is the last element of S is the same as the last element of S prime for all sets that I put in the finite collection F. And then these right here, don't read them. Let me just tell you what they say. If I have a finite sequence of sets S appearing in one of these S in Q, then this is what I would like to happen. If I stop at like S3, you know, the third element of the sequence, then there's a topology that I've associated with S1, S2, and S3. Okay? Now, the later sets in that finite sequence might not be open relative to that topology, but who cares? All I want is that the closure of the later elements in the sequence relative to that tau S3 topology are contained in S3. And then I also want the diameters of those sets to be, you know, decreasing, having at least as I go on. That's what this says here. And so somehow I'm collecting together sequences that all end in the same set, which I'll call B F. And they're sort of decreasing in some specific way relative to the topologies involved. Okay, so those are going to be my indices. The Ss are going to be the indices, and they index a base for the space. You have to argue through that, but that's going to be it. And then we sort of define the extension similar to the previous proof again. I'm going to say that a finite collection F is way below F hat if every sequence in S is extended properly by a sequence in F hat. And then that way, if I have an increasing sequence of indices here, and because I arranged that the size of these sets are shrinking down, I'm going to get an intersection of a point. And so it sort of helps me do the same reduction I got from the G delta diagonal thing in the previous group. I'm only going to have to really check that an increasing sequence of indices points to a non-empty intersection. But anyway, let me argue it. If I have an increasing sequence of indices like this, then what I can do is I can select out of it really an infinite sequence of open sets. And if I fix any particular member of that now infinite sequence, I've arranged so that the later elements of the sequence relative to some, you know, first topology, metric topology, are decreasing to zero. And if I look at their closures, I've got a decreasing sequence of closed sets whose diameters in that topology are going to zero. So it must intersect to a point. And it doesn't really matter what I found that guy with. It'll always end up being the same point. And then I can sort of take that back, as I mentioned before, and argue that any directed collection of indices will point to a non-empty intersection. Okay, so there are a bunch of open questions about the cofindly Polish property. It's sort of known to be a completeness property for several classes of spaces. But, you know, there are some, oh, I don't even think I put any... One particular question I could ask is, is the full converse with subcompact true? I told you that domain representability is easier, so I proved that. But it might be the case that cosmic cofindly Polish spaces are subcompact. Or even maybe in cosmic spaces, domain representability and subcompactness coincide. They don't in general. Domain representability is certainly weaker. And then I just threw this one in here, although we didn't talk about it. It is still open whether check complete spaces are subcompact. Okay, I think that's the thing.
Hey, any questions?
Can you give an example of a domain representable space without a G delta?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you can, you could just take a large... I mean, the arbitrary product of domain representable spaces is domain representable, so...
Any other questions? Is this the last talk of the session?
Thanks for hanging out.
We thank you, okay? Thank you.